Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for Thursday, or the, yeah, regular meeting for Thursday, November 9th, 2017 at 6:01 PM. Can I have roll call?
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Drizell.
I'm here.
Mr. Garin.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Fleck. Mr. Quagliano.
All right, we do have a quorum, and did you know 44 years ago today Billy Joel released "Pianoman"? Does that make you feel old? With that, I'll make a motion to go into closed session for the items listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion of second for Mr. Troy. Roll call?
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Garin.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano. Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Drizell.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck.
All right, motion carries. We are in closed session.
Sure, you had to be a big shot, didn't you?
What's that?
Sure, you had to be a big shot, didn't you?
You know what they are? Well, you know what they are.
Sixty years ago exactly today, the first, the first publication of Rolling Stone.
Wow.
And who was on the cover?
Mick Jagger.
Covering the Rolling Stone? You know.
Was it the Beatles?
Close. John Lennon.
There's just something, something wrong with the magazine called Rolling Stone, not the first, or Mick Jagger.
Okay. I can envision that.
No, I can't envision it because they have movies and...
Yeah, that's just how everything else is.
And, and it was bizarre because there was such a amount of peace and they had a picture of him with a gun.
Yeah. Oh God, remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ignore. Don't reply now. You'll get into a whole conversation. How are you?
Good, how are you, love me?
Trying to figure out, trying to find ways to figure out stuff. Figure out making people feel better. Did focus on the high school situation, but not resist. Just trying to head forward.
Yeah. It's a good experience to kind of go on through, you know, see how it plays. I've seen how elementary school...
Oh, Innovation Day? That's what I did last year. Did you go over to Conley or...
Yeah, I did the whole thing.
I went over when they did, sat down with that very good teacher and had a conversation and I...
Yeah, but no, I did, I was only going to do the...
Yeah.
As I can check out.
They're crazy.
They're gonna be what? That's what I like about you, Mary Carol.
Hey, how are ya? They gave you the night off?
And Dan, what did I do when I was at the high school yesterday? Did you lose your teeth in the high school? Paul and Terry. Paul and Terry. Not bad. Did you look in for your, uh, gap or nothing? Good night. Yes, alright.
I got it right? Well, there's other brands or other types. I just say, I just say like a medium. You have to say grande. I mean like medium or whatever you like.
I get. I'm not gonna be this dirty. No, that counts. I wanna get her a tea or water or something.
I don't know. I think.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're back in open session at 7:04 PM. We did suspend closed session. We will be going back afterwards, so can I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Melendi. Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Drizelle.
Here.
Mr. Garin.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Fleck. Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Alright, we do have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance. Mrs. McLaughlin. Haven't called you that in a while.
No.
How are you?
I'm well, yourself?
Good.
We are very excited to have some individuals here from 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade representing the Rockin' Martin Friends. So I have decided many of them wanted to introduce themselves. So if you wanted to say your name and say what grade you're in, alright? Alright. Go right up to the microphone.
My name is Kate and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Abby and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Roya, I'm in 4th grade.
Oh, well played.
My name is Josie, I'm in 4th grade.
My name is Ava, I'm in 3rd grade.
My name is Adrian, I'm in 4th grade.
Okay, if we could all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, you guys wanna grab a seat up here? Somebody knows how this works, I wonder why? There you go. Any seat you want. Any seat you want. Hi, everybody got their microphone on?
Yeah.
Should have a green light on the...
Yes.
Yeah? How's everyone doing?
Good.
Yeah, how was school today?
Good.
Good? You rehearsed this, you're doing it all together in harmony. So what did you learn this year so far?
Math and a lot of literacy.
Math and literacy? Yeah? What else?
Dividing decimals.
Ooh, cool.
Multiplying decimals.
Oh wow, you like that?
Hmm, kind of.
Very cool. And Tony's giving them a computer lesson? So this year he's learning how to operate a school board computer? Then you can show me later, Tony, because I bring my own because I don't know how to operate that one. All right, so holidays are coming up, right? What do you like to do for Thanksgiving?
Give thanks.
Yeah, do you have people over to your house or do you go over to someone's house?
Go over to somebody's house.
Yeah, you like that? Yeah, you like the food on Thanksgiving or do you like the football?
It's always the food.
Yeah? Yeah, and what about Christmas?
Yes.
Oh, definitely.
Definitely, definitely. Do you guys know how many days left till winter break?
No.
Really?
No.
Wow, how times change. I started counting down like the first week of school. That's good. All right, so you said you're in 5th grade? 5th grade, right?
Yeah.
Who are the other 5th graders? Okay? So we got 4th and 3rd, right? You were 3rd, right? Yeah. So 3rd, this is your first year at Martin. So how do you like the school?
I like it.
Yeah? Is it really different or is it kind of the same?
Um, it's kind of the same.
Yeah, they look the same, don't they? Yeah. What about you 5th graders? Are you excited about going to middle school next year?
Yeah.
Are you guys nervous about lockers?
Sort of. Yeah.
Sort of, yeah, that's what we hear. All the 5th graders are nervous about getting lockers. And what about the 4th graders? Do you like Martin?
Yeah.
Sure, especially the cafeteria and recess.
The cafeteria and recess, wow. And hey, what about the playground? How's your playground?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's smaller than Chasseck's.
Yeah.
It is? Well, you know why it's smaller? It's because you're bigger. You take up more room. See how that works? Yeah, yeah. So as you keep going on in life, you got some more school in front of you, but then you get to get a job. What kind of job, what kind of career do you guys want?
Teacher.
You want to be a teacher?
Yeah.
A teacher?
I want to be a politician and eventually the President of the United States.
Nice! All right. Well spoken, do you know how to tweet? No. Do you, what would you like to do?
I want to be a vet.
A vet? Ooh, that's good, that's good. What kind of animals do you like the most?
Dogs.
Dogs, yeah. Big dogs or little dogs? Big dogs, very cool. And what do you want to do?
Chemist.
A chemist? Ooh, very cool, very cool. All right, do you guys have any questions for us? Good, all right. All right, hey, can we get a picture with you guys?
Yeah.
Would that be cool? Awesome, thank you very much. Thank you, parents, for bringing them out tonight.
A report?
By the way, you misspelled my last name.
All right, you guys, you need to stand up so you can get up above the computer monitors there. You want to see your faces?
R-N-A-L.
Smiling faces.
Half of you are taller than Mrs. Melendi.
There we go again!
So funny, every single time!
Why the chicken cross the road? Never heard that one.
I'm gonna get on my tippy toes. Come, you get down.
And Mr. President, squeeze in, let's get the President in there.
Over here, bud, yeah. Move this chair up.
There we go. All right.
I hope my smile's...
Ken, you're not done.
All right.
One more?
Outstanding, thank you very much. All right, very cool.
Free to go.
All right.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
You too.
Kate, just a word to the wise, if you become a famous teacher or a president or whatever, start signing things now and charging prices for them now because they're worth more now than when you're president and all that, okay? And you can stay around if you want. It was a really fun meeting.
Or...
Ish. All right. Okay, student recognition. No. Okay, well, we recognize that those students are leaving. And I recognize her. Okay.
And him.
And him, yes. Hashtag burkeism. All right, so public comment, do we have any public comment? All right. Okay, revision and adoption of the agenda. Let's see here. Mr. Ori, do you have a report? Ms. Lombard, do you have a report? Dr. Schlichter? Do not. Mr. Altmeier? Just a small. No, really? Okay.
No, just a small.
Mr. Zare?
No.
All right. Uh, we do have FOIA, so we'll leave that on there. The superintendent is here, but we'll keep that on there and I'll keep the President's report. All right, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda with the removal of items number 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Mr. Garin. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion carries, that takes us on to item number 13, community relations. We have the FOIAs out there. Mr. Armstrong, anything to say about that? That's all I got to say about that. All right, superintendent's report. All right. You got it?
I got it tonight.
All right.
So November 15th...
I'd like to honor ourselves.
Yeah, no, I'll take that for you guys.
That's really awkward.
That's pretty funny though. So, November 15th is School Board Member Day. And obviously, we won't have a meeting before then, so we would like to honor all of you for all of the hard work and the things that you do every day for each of us, for our students, for our community, for our staff, the district as a whole. And I pulled it up online, I didn't really know how many school board members there are, but there are nearly 6,000 elected officials for school boards in the districts. And I probably will speak for everyone, I say that we have the best seven and we are very, very lucky to have all of you. And so, we appreciate everything you do. And I also researched and found out that every year they have a theme, and this year's theme is, how do I say, "Leading by Learning." And I know that each of you do that on a regular basis. This week alone, two of you spent time at our Innovation Day, others have been there on other days of that, you're in and out of the buildings all the time, learning about all of the things that we do, really wanting to know what it is the staff does, what it is the kids do, and by learning you're able to lead effectively. And so, we appreciate each of you very, very much. And so, we have a little something, I'll bring it around, and you know, we have Corny Sayings Dan had a laugh at this, but we have bunt cakes for you all and a little card. And the little thing that we've put on the saying is, "There's no bunt about it." We have so much to thank you for. So we'll bring these up to each of you and we have a card for all of you, and I'll pass those out while you guys go on to the next thing. So thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm keeping this one, no, I'm just kidding. Jerry, is that one for you? No.
What's a bunt? Name that movie. Yes, very good. All right. Awesome, thank you, thank you very much.
Too bad Matt watches us on the video. Can't sneak that in, can you?
Oh, thank you. All right, so I will continue the meeting with three bunt cakes by my side. All right, President's Report. I do not have anything specifically other than to mention that the IIII Conference is coming up a week from tonight and we will be attending that and reporting back on that in December. But having heard that a couple of members did get to attend Innovation Day, would you mind me putting you on the spot to comment on that and what your observations were?
Unless I can go first, but I'll...
So this was my first, this was my first Innovation Day, I don't know if any of you guys have been there.
Yes.
My real interest was to see, we started talking about this at the last meeting, the social interaction that the children are still getting with all of the technology that we have added. So I was interested in seeing how these kids used technology versus still social interaction, group, you know, activities and things. And it was really fascinating to see how they can incorporate technology into their group activities. You know, at the kindergarten level, they were, you know, doing a quiz type of thing, but they were on Teams. And so, there were three kids together, we're one team, and so it was kind of like this little contest thing and you could see it up on the screen. And I really was surprised, pleasantly surprised, by the way they incorporate still social into the technology. But it was fascinating, and the kids, you know, the other thing I noticed is kids were moving around and all doing so many different things. And we were at kindergarten, 1st and 2nd, and that one teacher that we saw had to redirect or there wasn't a kid not doing what he was supposed to, they were all so engaged because they were moving around enough that I feel like they just, it keeps their interest. So, I'd love to go to another one at the higher level, the older schools. So, next time.
And where was it?
This was at McCaveen. And then Tony went to Conley as well, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, honestly, just blown away. You know, I haven't been in the elementary schools in a number of years as far as kids not being in there, just to see, just to see the transformation of education where it's not a teacher standing in front of a bunch of desks and just spewing information. I mean, it's completely the opposite of that. I mean, it is just the delivery of education and watching it being individualized, I didn't feel like it was being staged necessarily for us, I thought we just dropped in these rooms and stuff was going on and just watching, kids are, kids are working collaboratively, they're in different groups, threes, fours, twos, kid off here, kid off there, they all have all this different seating arrangements. It's just a really free form of learning and they're all mostly, I mean, they were very engaged was the thing that I took away from that is just to see, and that's, I think, the critical piece to learning, is kids being engaged and wanting to keep looking at stuff, wanting to keep knowing the answers to certain things and, you know, and it isn't all just having computers in front of them. There was an element of it, but it was only part of what was going on there. I mean, there's a lot of pen and pencil or pencil and paper, you know, writing going on in some of the classrooms, you know, it was, you know, K through 5 and, you know, the science class that they were building, you know, it wasn't Legos, it was something a little more extravagant with battery packs and working as a team, trying to put together these things at tables and I was just, you know, even just the furniture in these rooms. It's seriously, I have, you know, this is all, it's all different stuff than what I remember being in those classrooms back in the day when my kids were going to those schools. So, it was just, it was really, I mean, I just enjoyed it thoroughly, I enjoyed talking to the teachers, just engaging the kids a little bit, I mean, I just, you know, stuff going on in the hallways outside the classroom where they're all, they're all well behaved and you got a 2nd grade girl who's got a math problem, it's pretty fairly complicated in my opinion for 2nd grade, and she's, "What are you doing?" Well, I'm, she's videotaping herself explaining the answer to the problem on her Chromebook. I mean, just watching some of that stuff was, it was pretty cool. And so, just seeing, you know, we, you know, we've seen a little bit more of what's going on in the high school, it's a little more, for me, a little bit more tangible as far, but seeing it at that grade level and where it really gets, you know, the foundation of education, it was really striking to see and I'm, it's, just so glad I went. So, it was cool. And I sat in on, I sat in on the people who were visiting?
Yeah.
The exchange afterwards and where they're asking questions and things of that nature, just, that was valuable too, to listen to that and listen to our people, talk to them and see the types of questions they had. So it was, it was, I don't know, so, it's a good deal.
Anything administration want to say about the Innovation Days?
So our next one is... I have the calendar. The next one is, same thing, next one is February 7th, and so we are slated, we rotate through the schools, and so we're slated to be at Leggie and Marlowe, it's always at the high school, obviously. And so, we'll be gearing up for that one pretty soon. What we are finding, which is kind of interesting, is that a lot of our middle school visitors are actually wanting to visit the high school because they're wanting to take blended strategies back to their middle schools. So sometimes, the middle school tends to be the level that we have the most variable amount of visitors, sometimes we'll have 10, sometimes we'll have zero, we didn't have any this past time. But we always have a real strong representation at the high school and elementary just keeps growing and growing, so it's really exciting to see. But yes, everybody is absolutely welcome, so just let us know. Yeah, we'll go ahead and send that out, so if anybody wants to mark that, if you can free up on that day, it'd be fantastic. Oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Very cool. Thank you very much. All right, that takes us on to the Consent Agenda. I do have one item I want to remove, and that's 16 dot 1 because we have a discussion yet around that, so I would like to move 16 dot 1 out of consent. Is there anything else anyone wants to remove? Going once? Going twice? All right, so I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda with the removal of item number 16 dot 1. Second. We have a motion and a second from Mr. Garin Gentry. The two-headed board member. All those in favor, actually, we need a voice, a roll call.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck? Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Drizell?
Yes. All right, Consent Agenda is approved. That takes us back to item number 16 dot 1, Delegate Assembly. So I reminded the board to make sure you got your votes into Ms. Stock so she can compile them and guilty, I did not. But I will tell you that I did support all the recommendations from the IASB on their resolutions. With that in mind, Mr. Quagliano, anything you want to add?
I got nothing to add other than I, because I do see there's some opposes on that first one.
Right.
And so, if someone could explain, I didn't get a chance to read the stuff as thoroughly as I should have, so... as I should have. So, if somebody can explain that one to me, so I could have a...
Well, we've got a couple of, Mr. Fleck's not here to, so you're going to have to be the voice of the minority opinion here.
So, the, that one has to do with, I saw it more on a statewide level, instead of just our district. But basically, it gives the school boards the authority, if they so choose, to allow the administrators to have a concealed carry in class, in their classrooms, in the, in the office. Here's, bear with me.
No, go ahead. My eyes are wide open.
Here's, here's the issue. In our district, it's not necessary, we don't need that, because we have a three-minute call time, from the time you touch the button to call the police, to the time they're inside the building. There are, there are school districts in rural parts of, of the state that don't have that luxury. They call the police, and it's a half an hour before they get there. So, what do those schools do, you know, if there's, if there's a shooter in the building? It gives, it doesn't mandate it, it gives the schools the option to decide if they want to do that or not. Obviously, our school district won't have a need for that, but this is a statewide issue.
Right, no, and I...
It's about the safety of kids in rural parts of the state that, that don't have a quick call time.
Right, so does anybody have that in front of, that they could read that to me?
Yeah.
As to what it says? Um, let's see here, I appreciate that explanation.
Bear with us here.
That was Mike's, that was Mike's reasoning, too. That's, him and I talked about it.
You want us to read the resolution itself?
Yes, can you please?
Yeah. It says, "Be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support and advocate legislation which provides local school boards the option of developing student safety and protection plans, which may include administrators, faculty, and/or other staff, who have successfully completed a training course approved by the school board, and who have passed the multiple background checks and qualifications, four and have a current Illinois concealed carry license, or a carry license issued under the Law Enforcement Officers Safety Act, to be an active and armed part of the student safety and protection plan upon being granted board approval."
Okay, so, as is always the, the discussion here, to support the recommendation means, and the recommendation means, is to do not adopt. So, to support the do not adopt means we are not in favor of it.
Okay, I thought we were working off the other premise, that you would just answer the question and not worry about whether the association's support. But it's a, okay, if that's the premise you're going under...
Well, that's how it's defined here. So, give...
Do not adopt.
Yeah, what you're saying is...
So, if you oppose do not adopt, you're saying you want it adopted.
Right, so Mike and I...
I, I follow it. So, I'm, I'm with you. So, I would, while I'm a, not a, not a gun proponent at all, I, the language is sufficient for me, where it gives people options, and school boards options, where I would, I would support what it says, but I oppose what the recommendation is.
Okay, so that would give us a, a four to three position to support the IASB do not adopt. Is there anyone on the side of the four that might reconsider and support the actual recommendation for administration to carry, given our training?
Nope. Not me.
I would say that, yeah, I don't change my opinion either, but I, I understand and I agree with, with Mrs. Melendi on, on this matter. And I believe in this case, it is the members of the downstate districts that, if they feel strongly that way, they will come out in numbers and support this, and it will pass on their merits, on their district. But for purposes of our district, I'm voting for what is right for our district, or appropriate for our district. But I don't disagree, and I actually do agree with, with your thought As it stands right now, the position District 168 will support is the do not adopt. Can we live with that?
I wasn't dead strict.
Yeah.
I, I see the position, I have a, of the position, discretion to boards who felt they needed to.
I mean, I'll, I'll just say, I think from, you know, the gun, the premise of guns in the school, just the unintended consequences of what that might mean in terms of, if it's in somebody's hands, it could be in the wrong hands. And in a, and in the very worst-case scenario of a, a active shooter or violent attack, a lot of that stuff unfortunately doesn't make that big of a difference, at the end of the day, in terms of bringing resolution to that. So, it's, the more than likely scenario is those getting into the wrong hands and having unintended consequences that are just as dire.
Okay. All right, the, the only other topic I would bring up on this, in the past, other than one, one occasion, the president has represented our district in the Delegate Assembly there. Are we okay with that?
Do you want, do you want to do it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
All right, so, with that then, I suppose a voice vote is good enough on this, but I'll make, I'll make a motion to adopt the District 158 position that we support the IASB positions on items 1 through 6 and 8, and that we, oh, sorry, and, and 7. There's actually, hold on a second before I complete that motion, there is one opposition to position statement 7. Anything you want to say?
Yeah, there's, there's just a couple points I wanted just to throw out there for discussion. One was just, actually, number 6, where I did have a support to adopt.
Yes.
Is, and I'm refreshing my memory on the exact details, but basically, the idea was, hey, if you go tax less than the PTAL max, you basically never recover that and never have the option.
Right.
Where this, this position's a very good one, and I think a very, one that's needed, is if you can cut back on your, your levy one year, you shouldn't be penalized in future years, you should be able to recapture.
Right, and just for clarity...
There's language that, that limits the recovery period, which I didn't think made sense, for all the same reasons, the whole thing makes sense in the first place, is that if you could take three years off the max, but you know in five years you're gonna need to go higher, you should have the ability to do that.
Okay, and just for the sake of record, that number 6 that we're referring to reads, be resolved, the IASB shall, in this case, support the adoption of legislation that allows school districts to levy an amount less than the PTAL formula would allow, without penalty in future years. This would require that when a district under levies, the district will have the ability to reassess the reduced levy taken in a given year, and recover the entitled levy, or the full entitled levy, for a period of three years from the effective date of the reduced levy. A district will not be entitled to reassess the reduced levy once the three-year limit has expired. So, in effect, it's, you know what, we'll go less than the levy one year, and then the next year, you can recoup that, and I assume potentially a little more, to recover what you went lower last year with. Yeah.
And my, my objection was that, from a, from a taxpayer's standpoint, is if you, in a district, you're basically forcing somebody in that, that deadline year to either take it or lose it forever. But if you'd say, hey, I have some contingencies, and I could work through these, and perhaps not need the money, but if I make the call now, I'm committed forever to be lower, when I could very well need it.
All right, then, and...
So, you're, you're doing proper fiscal management, but you're, you're, you're just tying the hands later down the road.
Well, therein lies the structure of the three-year limit. It's like, you know, if you're going to recover it, if you're concerned about recovering it, recover it within three years, or...
Well, yeah, I'm just saying that...
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
Right, but I think that's taxpayer harmful.
Okay. Okay, anything on position 7 that you, you opposed, because everybody else supported?
I have listed as open, more just to bring it up for my own enlightenment, is, I'm not sure I got all the, the points it was trying to, to get across, and just wanted to get a better understanding of what the whole charter situation is.
Okay, I had it up here, and then I just lost the connection, and it went blank on me. Hold on a second.
Sure.
There is a one, maybe that's why I couldn't understand it.
I, I oppose the slow technology. All right, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. Wow, this is really slow. All right, I have to scroll slower. Okay, here. So, position 7 says, "Be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall urge adoption of legislation which would create a new methodology for funding of state authorized charter schools, which would not have a negative financial impact on the host district. With respect to state authorized virtual charter schools, further limit the withholding of state funds from host school districts in proportion to the per pupil expenditure used for building maintenance, classroom supplies, transportation, safety and security, and other costs unique to brick and mortar schools. For all state authorized charter schools, require that proof of continuing enrollment and attendance be submitted quarterly with prorated refunds to the host school district upon withdrawal of students from the charter school." And so, the position has been supported in the past, and this is a reaffirmation, and what you're saying, Mr. Gentry, is that you don't support the reaffirmation.
No, I was curious as to hear what the, like, on paper, it doesn't sound bad, I just don't understand what the, maybe I'm just misreading it, but it basically says, don't, and I'm just not that familiar with the details of the charter school issue, but in terms of not penalizing local districts for...
Well, as, you know, average daily attendance determines what our revenue from the state is, if we were to lose a student...
Yeah.
To a charter school, we would lose the funding that comes along with that.
Right, and that is what is supported by everyone's vote?
Well, what, what, what is this, this position is saying is that...
Find a new way, find a different way.
That model of all or nothing, if the student goes to the charter, you lose all that funding, they're looking for another way to, to deal with that.
Right.
Right. So, the, the position statement here is they support looking for another approach, other than the all or nothing funding model.
Did I read that wrong, then? Does the Resolution Committee recommend do not adopt?
Ah, I read it wrong.
I know there was a correction on one of them, maybe this is it, on the Resolutions Committee standpoint.
With respect to state authorized virtual charter schools...
Read, read the last sentence of the Resolution Committee rationale. They're saying if, if the local district raises more money on their own, then that money will go with the student to the charter school.
Okay, so, the assumption is that while, on the surface, this doesn't seem to be a bad idea to consider refunding, or rejigging the funding model, that in doing so, there may be more bad that comes from that than good.
Yeah, they're saying, they're saying it'll be detrimental.
They're saying do not adopt.
It'll be detrimental to the school district. That's how I read that, that last sentence is what cinched it for me.
Any other opinions on this?
The, the other, when I read this also, I looked at it in the context of the new school funding model that came out. And so, I didn't know if that funding model, the revised version, also impacted the charter schools, and whether this particular position was mute to begin with.
Yeah, money follows the student in the new funding.
Yeah, so, so what's, that's why I wondered if the position is valid anyway, because all these positions and arguments were made long before the student funding model changed.
Yeah.
So, so, is there really a point to having this discussion, because all of that changed anyway? And that's what I didn't know.
It's a valid argument.
And that's what I didn't know, and so, for that reason, I said, "Don't adopt any changes, let's see how all of that affects everything in the long run."
Now, you make two good, good, good points for not adopting it, so. Mr. Gentry?
I'm still confused, I, does, is everyone saying that, yes, we don't want to change the formula, it takes money away from the district if there's a charter school?
The last half of your statement isn't necessarily correct, the first part is...
Other side of the table?
We said for that reason, we're out.
I mean, I'm serious, I'm serious, we gotta, I'm not...
Simon Cowell over there said, "Yeah, that's a no for me."
I'm not, I'm not totally clear, though, what everyone's thought is. I heard you describe it as something different than what you understood.
I think we're going with the recommendation, it wasn't, McGirt is going with the recommendation of...
Do not adopt.
Yes.
What does that mean? What does do not adopt mean?
So, I, you know what, I...
Make no changes.
Yes.
Make no changes to the current statute.
So, you're, so you're satisfied enough with the current charter funding mechanism?
No, it doesn't say that. It doesn't say that, it just says, "Don't, don't change it right now."
Don't change something I might not be fully satisfied with.
Yeah, and this is, like Paul said, this is gonna be void anyway, is my guess, because with the new education funding model, the money follows the student.
And then, isn't that what...
And what this says is, don't focus any attention, or don't spend any time on supporting a new model for charter school funding. Let's focus on other things, because as, as, as Mr. Troy indicated, based on the way the funding model changed, this really doesn't apply anymore. So...
Does it?
I don't, also, we don't have a charter school in our district.
No, but we're always on, on the guard, just in case, but, yeah.
But if somebody came and opened up, opened up a district, took a thousand kids away, you're saying, hey, don't mess with the formula, and just take, have the money follow them, follow the students to the new school.
If that's what the education funding model says, it can't, you don't have any , it has no recourse.
Well, what, what, what the original statement said worked to find a different way. But now, what the IASB is saying, we're not going to support that anymore. And we're agreeing, don't support it. Don't focus your energy on changing the funding model, it's, focus on other things.
That's what I, that was my intent.
Which is fine, I mean, that's kind of what the reason I read through it, is like it's...
It's confusing, the way they have it.
We always have that confusion when you got a double negative, so...
I'm not even saying adopt, not adopt, it's just, the whole premise of it is...
Maybe they could work out better state of their positions.
Does the money follow the kid if we lose?
Because we're not the only ones that are...
Right, I read it as, there's always that concern of the fairness of funding charter schools to the detriment of the local district. And once you start the downward spiral on a local district, it just, it accelerates. And that's why I said, thought the resolution was highlighting as a problem. And basically, what we're saying collectively here is, yeah, that may be a problem, let's just not deal with it now, in terms of a resolution, is what I'm hearing people say.
Paul, remember, this is a reaffirmation of existing position.
Or regardless, though.
Okay.
So, the Resolution Committee said, "State authorized charter schools, or SACs, continue to be a major issue as host districts have to..." continue to be a major issue as host districts have to scramble to find a way to deal with fewer revenues from the state while still providing a quality education to the students they serve. On the surface, that's very clear.
Uh huh.
Right, I think we all agree with that. Current law takes state funding from a local district and distributes it to the state authorized charter school. If the local school district looked to raise revenue and provide additional resources to students from local sources, the charter schools would receive an even larger share of the local district's state funding.
Are local sources, property shares, what's the local source?
I, uh, perhaps the 1% sales tax that can be applied, um.
Well, and property tax, right?
Yeah. You know, I, I guess I don't have enough passion, one way or the other, to, well, to continue the conversation. But, um, yeah, I don't, I, I, I don't think that this is necessarily, uh, you know, the, the hill to die on, so to speak. It's, it's an issue, you're right, but I don't think it's that big of an issue, given that there are other, other issues to tackle and other issues around charter school funding, other than this particular position statement.
Yeah, I guess I'm willing to drop, but I just don't get what everyone's saying about it or what they're really feeling about it.
I think, I think you're struggling with the fact that we're saying we don't, we're not, I'm not concerned. Not, not lack about a word, that, that didn't come over, but.
No, and I'm fine, I'm fine with that, if that's what we're saying, is it just not a concern? That, that's fine, I'm just trying to struggle with it.
I think it's not an issue that, you know, as a state corporation should be taking up right now. I think is, is what the thought is. And to do not adopt.
Okay.
All right, so with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt, um, a, a support position of the IASB positions on the resolutions for all eight items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Mr. Garen. All those in favor, say aye? Aye? All those opposed? All right, motion carries.
I did have one question.
Too late, sorry, sir.
No, there was a.
You're out of, you're out of order.
There was an email that came later after this that changed, a typo where the position was changed. And I was trying to pull up email to see what that one was.
I did not see that.
I'm trying to be sure here.
Kevin hashtag fake news Gentry, what? Let me see. Well, you know what, we'll, we'll take a look at that offline then. Um, okay, um, item number eighteen dot one. Um, I'll make a, um, I'll make a motion to, um, approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $10 million general obligation refunding school bonds, series 2017, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax efficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. Let me restate that, what do we got here?
It's just parameters.
Parameters. Um, do we have a resolution number?
Yeah.
Let me go back.
We want to further go out of order, I found the email, sir. It is, they recommend do adopt.
Which one? That one?
Yeah, that one.
Oh, that Ben Shwarm guy.
Okay, one second here.
So they're saying they want to follow the money?
No, they say they want to change the formula.
Okay. All right, and, um, we'll get back to that in a minute, okay? All right, so in the past, when we have a resolution, we usually number it and we give it an identification. In this case, we don't have that designation.
Normally for these, we do not number these resolutions. Normally, when we do debt refundings, they're as presented. And, and the language in the agenda is the language provided by Chapman, our attorneys, for which needs to be in the agenda just for simple approval. But obviously, the, the attached resolution is unchanged from what was presented to the board at the committee at the whole meeting last week.
Okay, so.
So is reading the resolution as you did within the agenda, that was proper in accordance with what the attorneys in Chapman had put forth for the resolution, for the agenda?
Okay, so the resolution at hand here is the issuance of general obligation refunding school bonds not to exceed $10 million.
Correct.
For the purpose of refunding outstanding bonds. Yeah. Are we all clear on that as a board?
Yeah.
Okay, so with that said resolution, I will make a motion to adopt said resolution as agreed upon by the board here.
As presented.
Well, as, yeah. Not, well.
Presented in its entirety. It's, it's a parameters resolution, it's not, it's not.
Well, I want to identify, better identify the parameters resolution. I don't think on the record, it's, it's very clear what that parameters resolution is.
Not to exceed $10 million?
Okay. So, given the discussion around what the resolution is, and that's to issue refunding school bonds not to exceed $10 million, do I have a, I, I will make a motion to adopt that resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second from Mr. Garen, any other additional discussion?
No, the only, the only discussion being, nothing, you know, we talked a little bit about the, you know, we'd been corresponded to about tax law changes potentially. But the conversation that's been had is it, it doesn't change anything we're doing today, so.
Correct, yeah.
For the current calendar year. I just wanted to reaffirm so everybody.
And, and it wouldn't make good financial sense to just wait.
No. No, and, and rates continue to, uh, they're approximately 15 basis points now, 15 basis points better than when they were as of October 11th, when we first began the discussion on this topic. So we are looking at doing a pricing next Tuesday on the 16th. Is it Thursday?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, on Thursday, the 16th, that's correct.
Yep, okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second, can I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Drizel?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck? Mr. Quagliano?
Yes. All right, motion carries, item number eighteen dot two. I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental purchase orders report and supplemental accounts payable report as presented on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Mr. Quagliano, any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck? Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Drizel?
Yes. All right, motion carries. Item number eighteen dot three, memorandum of understanding. I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and HESPA.
Second.
Motion and a second from Mr. Gentry, any discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Drizel?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
All right, motion carries. I want to just return to the item of the board positions, and I apologize for that, especially for you viewers out there, which one? That one, that one, right? Um, all right, so, Mr. Gentry, you indicated you had received an email that said, um, the position of the IASB is to adopt or to continue to support that charter school funding.
Yeah, there is a email dated the 27th of September that I believe.
Sent just to Kevin. Can you remember this, just to Kevin Gentry?
Yeah, yeah.
Good memory.
It's from, uh, Ben Shwarm at IASB.
Yeah.
And it basically just amends the recommendation to say, it recommends do adopt, and cited as a typo.
Well, seeing as how I'm on the record for saying I wasn't passionate, I guess if I take a passionate opinion at this point, I'm a liar.
The action taken is actually, wouldn't need to be changed because you'd just be supporting the recommendation. If everyone was comfortable with that.
Yeah.
I don't care, because I feel like it's null and void, because there's a new education funding model since then, around. So I feel like it negates, it negates this one.
So, Mr. Gentry's argument, if I will, is to say that we, we adopted a, a motion to support the IASB opinion. Given that the IASB opinion is to adopt this, we do not need to change it if we go along with that.
Right.
And I would agree with that logic.
Okay.
Anybody else disagree?
Totally agree. Hundred percent.
Passionately, right? With passion. Okay. Okay, so with that, item number nineteen, public comment, any new public? All right, I apologize for the confusion. I'm not sure who I'm apologizing to, but we have one viewer and at least one person in the audience. That wasn't told to be here. All right, um, with that, um, I'll make a motion to return to closed session at 7:58 PM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Mr. Troy, roll call, please.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Drizel?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck? Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, we're back in closed session.
Nice catch, Kevin.